Good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 regular meeting to order. Call the roll.
Mrs. Trump? Mrs. Stumpf, I'm so sorry.
Here.
Mrs. Trent?
Here.
Dr. Santiani?
Present.
Mr. Sodder?
Here.
Mrs. McKenna?
Here. And then next, our treasurer, Andy, is in DC with our Hastings students. And so in the absence of that, I need to designate another board member to serve as the pro tempora for the treasurer pro tempora for this meeting, and I will designate Lou Sodder to be the treasurer pro tempora. Then next, we need an approval of the, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And then I will need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I think we should vote. Do we? We don't.
Go ahead and vote, and then we'll amend it.
Okay.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Sodder?
Aye.
Mrs. Trump? Mrs. Trent, I can't. You two sit next to each other. Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. And then we need to amend the agenda. We need to remove consent item G. And then also to remove the executive session motion reason number one. And Dr. Hunt will explain those changes.
You want to get a motion in a second first?
So moved.
Second.
So Board, we're asking you to remove item G under consent this evening. That is a agreement with the city regarding the demolition of the city center. We received updated costs on that, and we do need to kind of work with the city through that to update that figure. I don't anticipate any problems with it. We just didn't want you to have to approve it at two consecutive meetings. In terms of timeline and the work moving forward, it should have no impact. And the second recommendation is we will not be talking about personnel in executive session. So I've asked that that motion be pulled.
Mrs. Stump? Mrs. Trent?
Hi.
Dr. Santiani? Mr. Sodder?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. We're so excited to have the opportunity to honor our 2024, 2025 retirees tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank our retirees and their loved ones for joining us. I'm Jenny McKenna, the president of the Board of Education. I'd also like to introduce my colleagues, Vice President Lou Sodder, Niti Santiani, Liz Stump, and Lori Trent. And now I'll turn things over to Niti.
All right. So we begin tonight by honoring Deborah Amling. Are they going to stand? I'll just stare. Okay. She's our elementary curriculum coordinator. If you want to come on up. Deb started in our district. Deb started in our district as a kindergarten teacher at Barrington Elementary School and says she considers it an honor to be the teacher's children's first teacher. She captured their imagination right away by giving them magic Play-Doh on the first day of school, telling them it would predict if they would have a good year. They didn't realize that she had ensured every ball of Play-Doh was filled with a drop of food coloring, ensuring that their dough would change color and give them that positive prediction they needed. Chief Academic Officer Keith Palmory says Deb has been critical and a driving force, supporting the science of reading, the implementation of new resources, and the MTSS work within the district. He also notes that high school students still react with excitement when they run into her, into their former kindergarten teacher at school, proving what a positive impact she had on their lives. In retirement, Deb is looking forward to traveling to Alaska with her sister to kayak and hike.
Our next retiree is Kurt Bixel, who has served as high school science and robotics teacher, as well as a soccer coach and the lead mentor in the first robotics team. Many staff members will remember walking carefully around Kurt's students in the old high school when they had to spill out into the narrow hallways to find little space to conduct experiments and test prototypes. Passersby always got a quick science lesson as Kurt would step out to check on the students. Kurt says he absolutely loved being able to serve as a teacher in those after-school capacities, both as coach and as a robotics mentor. Principal Andrew Theato says Kurt makes learning fun by inspiring curiosity and teamwork. His passion for subject areas has positively impacted students, both academically and as they grow into confident adults.
Our next retiree is Windermere Elementary School music teacher Dulce Delkey. Dulce says she will always cherish the memories she makes each year with the fifth grade students as they prepare for the annual musical. She shared that one student found her classroom to be such a supportive environment that she was able to overcome her fears of singing by herself and now has a solo in this year's musical. Principal Julie Nolan says there is not another human who exudes such passion, positivity, and a true love for the impact the gift of music can have in your life. She says thousands and thousands of students have been touched by this walking ray of sunshine. At school, Dulce's number one role has always been to have fun. She says she will continue to follow that rule in retirement and plans to spend more time with family as well as rest, read, hike, and bike.
Our next retiree is Sabrina D. Libra, if I can say your name. Sabrina has taught at Barrington, Windermere, Jones, and most recently, Wickliffe. She has Cole and Ava with her this evening, her two beautiful children, and she is partially responsible for raising Dylan and Skylar as she was their first, second, and third grade teacher. Sabrina says it's impossible to single out a favorite memory from her career because she has so many impactful encounters with beautiful souls who became family and inspired her to grow as a human. She clearly welcomed her students and their colleagues into her heart, and the resulting relationships made both parties stronger. Wickliffe Principal Angela, Principal Angela Evans calls Sabrina "a true pillar of the district's progressive education program", consistently grounding her work in those core values. Sorry, I'm making you cry. Her commitment to student-centered learning is unwavering. She has truly modeled what it means to lead with both heart and intention. In retirement, Sabrina plans to go to Venice, lucky her, to nurture her creative soul side, excuse me, by being an artist and an author. She also plans many trips back to UA to whatever cities her children are calling home. Congratulations.
Our next retiree is Erin Miguel Keith, who was the first intervention specialist in our district, a counselor at Jones Middle School, and most recently, our peer assistance specialist. Erin says that her entire career has been in UA, even her student teaching. So the meaningful memories here are plentiful. She says she has had amazing mentors throughout the years and also made lifelong friends. She notes that one particular colleague found a special place in her heart forever, her husband Joe Keith. Chief Talent Officer Pete Scully calls Erin "the perfect person to support our new staff members". He cites her calm, understanding, and kind presence and says it's clear that she cultivates genuine and deep connections with others. Pete says he hopes she truly understands how significant her impact has been on this district she loves. Erin says she hasn't made specific plans for retirement, but she's sure that it will include gardening, photography, and more foster dogs. Congratulations.
Our next retiree is Catherine Shapiro, who has spent the last 21 years as a school counselor at Hastings Middle School. During that time, she has also supported service learning, mentoring, her tennis team, and countless students, student clubs, her favorite bringing, cake decorating, and improv. Catherine says some of her favorite memories involve participating in special and service learning activities with students and colleagues. She notes how amazing it is to see students display the skills highlighted in the profile of an engaged learner, seeing them take risks and grow while learning about their own strengths and passions. Principal Penny Spire says Catherine always puts her students first. She approaches everything with a kind and friendly demeanor, which creates a welcoming environment for students, staff, and families. She brings a sense of calm and positivity to every interaction and is at the heart of the school's culture. In retirement, Catherine pants, plans to travel and work as a substitute, all while finding new things to learn and new adventures to experience.
Our next retiree is Frank Tuttle, a longtime high school science teacher, who has also served as a district teacher leader in technology and an AV specialist. And yes, give him a round of applause. Frank says the best thing about teaching is having amazing students in his classroom every year and watching them grow as learners and as people. He is grateful for all the coworkers who mentored him and enjoys being able to share his experiences with younger teachers. Principal Andrew Theato says Frank is known for his true love of science and his warm, thoughtful teaching style. He has sparked curiosity and growth in countless students and made the school a better place each day through his genuine caring and dedication. In retirement, Frank plans to travel and work, as well as enjoy woodworking and photography.
We wait for Warren to get here? No? Okay. All right. Our next retiree is Warren Orloff. Warren Orloff is a longtime science teacher at Upper Arlington High School. When looking back on his time in Upper Arlington, he quotes The Grateful Dead and says, "What a long, strange trip it has been." He notes he has worked through eight contracts, five superintendents, five principals, and a whole bunch of assistant principals. His current principal, Andrew Theato, calls Warren "a pillar of strength and leadership within both the science department and the school". I'm expecting him to walk in any second. His wisdom, calm demeanor, and wit foster a collaborative and supportive environment for staff and students alike. In retirement, Warren plans to travel, including taking a trip to Italy this summer. The travel plans can expand soon with colleague and wife Marlene being just a short time from her retirement as well.
We're going to come down and do a picture before we go through the rest of the retirees who are not here. We also have several retirees who are not able to join us tonight. Before we, oh, okay. We're going to move on to our retirees who are not here.
Now we will move on to our retirees, as Jenny just said, who could not be here with us tonight. Suzanne Beechey is retiring from her position as a driver for a transportation department. Really important job, I would add. Transportation Director Teresa Seward says that Suzanne always took great care of her students and ensured they were well-versed in how to handle any unexpected situations on the bus. Suzanne worked hard to make sure her students felt understood and at home on the bus.
Patti Buttrious served as the media clerk at Tremont Elementary School. Principal Jackie Praddy says Patti has a special gift for connecting with students through books, always ready with a recommendation and a smile. She worked tirelessly behind the scenes, and no one could keep up with her pace, both in dedication and in hallway speed.
Our next retiree is Kristy Carlton, a Jones alum who went on to teach German to generations of Jones students. She can't be with us tonight because she's also the coordinator for the Washington DC trip and is currently traveling with the students. Along with being a beloved teacher, Kristy is known for riding her bike to school every single day of the year. Principal Amy White says she is a beloved part of the Jones culture and a source of strength for everyone.
Tammy Dool is retiring from her position as Building Secretary at Barrington Elementary School. Principal Nicole Cooper says Tammy's dedication to the school and her ability to manage countless responsibilities with professionalism have made a lasting impact on Barrington. She will be missed by her colleagues, students, and families.
Julie Iric is retiring from her position as a teacher at Wickliffe Progressive Elementary School. Director of Elementary Education Michelle Banks says Julie has always been deeply committed to her students and her craft. She has stepped up during difficult times, even serving as the interim principal at Wickliffe when former principal Chris Colaris was ill.
Valerie Upperson has served as a driver in our transportation department. Director Teresa Seward says Valerie has a good sense of humor and is always pleasant with her students and maintains a good relationship with them.
Amy Eastep retired earlier this year from her position as the Building Secretary at Greensview Elementary School. Principal Jason Wolf says Amy was organized, thoughtful, supportive, and treated the Greensview community like family. She was the go-to person for everyone and was always able to make everyone else's work a little easier. The school will miss her patience, work ethic, and attention to detail.
Paul Filippone? Has been a staple at Jones for over the last 30 years, proudly serving as a custodian there through generations of students and families. He always got a kick when students told him their parents still remembered him from when they were in school. Executive Director of Operations Mike Abbott says Paul was a dedicated leader who took great pride in keeping our oldest building in the best shape possible for the students and staff.
Mindy Harmon is retiring from her position as an ELA teacher at Jones. Mindy recalls poetry slams and class plays among her most fond memories. Principal Amy White calls Mindy "a quiet champion for ELA at the school, getting powerful and impressive results from her students".
Stacy Hoover has served as a health and physical education teacher at Upper Arlington High School. Principal Andrew Theato says she worked hard to instill a lifelong commitment to wellness and personal growth in her students. Her positive energy, encouragement, and passion for helping students build confidence and resilience has made her an invaluable part of the high school.
Kim Johnson is retiring from her position as a French teacher at Jones. Principal Amy White calls Kim kid-centered, friendly, caring, and a lovely human. Aside from her teaching skills, Kim was known for using her time on cafeteria duty to support and grow the school's culture of kindness. She created a warm and welcoming atmosphere for students in her classroom and throughout the school.
Carl Kirkpatrick is an intervention specialist at Jones, but Principal White says he is also the unofficial ambassador at the school. He is the first to welcome new staff and is an integral part of supporting sixth graders transitioning to middle school. He is always friendly and positive. He is known for saying, "Occasionally, there is a good day at Jones. The rest are all great days."
Sean Martin is a language arts teacher at Upper Arlington High School. His ability to make positive connections with students and to nurture their voices is what he will be remembered for. Principal Andrew Theato says Sean has a true talent for bringing literature to life and has had a significant impact on generations of students.
Sarah Oberlin is a longtime teacher at Wickliffe Progressive Elementary. Colleagues say Sarah is consistently student-centered and always goes above and beyond to ensure each student receives the support they need. She is a trusted and collaborative colleague who is always willing to lend a hand. Her warm and positive influence will be deeply missed.
Amy Oxley has been a math teacher at Upper Arlington High School for 24 years. Principal Theato says Amy's brilliance in the classroom was matched only by her behind-the-scenes mastery of scheduling, which helped the building run smoothly. In retirement, Amy plans to continue serving on her local school board and as a township fiscal officer, as well as spending time with her six grandchildren.
Wendy Pinta is a longtime science teacher at the high school, as well as an acclaimed lacrosse coach. Wendy says she will always be grateful for the amazing colleagues in her time at UAHS, especially to have been a part of the new building opening. Principal Theato says her energy, integrity, and mentorship in the classroom and on the field have enriched the school community beyond measure.
Mark Rice is a seventh-grade social studies teacher at Hastings. He fondly remembers the time all of his students got As on a test and earned the right to shave his head. Principal Penny Stires says he is well-loved by students and consistently brings a sense of calm and collaboration to colleagues.
James Schaefer is a district custodian at the high school. Because he worked weekends, he often ended up supporting student athletes and couldn't help cheering them on while ensuring their spaces were competition-ready. Executive Director of Operations Mike Abbott says James always has a smile on his face and a positive attitude.
Sue Stimmel serves as a math teacher and assistant lacrosse coach at Upper Arlington High School. Principal Theato says her passion for math and her dedication as a coach shaped her students and student athletes into confident, skilled, and resilient young people. Her steady guidance, wisdom, and passion will be missed.
Our next retiree is Kelly Tedaris, a gifted intervention specialist at Hastings, who Principal Penny Stires refers to as "a bundle of sunshine who brightens every hallway and every conversation". Kelly says she'll always remember her sixth-grade concilium classes participating in the stock market simulation game. She will forever be grateful to her students, colleagues, and the UA community for the support she received while battling and beating cancer. Her coworkers even hired an Elvis impersonator to sing during her last chemo treatment.
Tom Trace has served as a science teacher at Jones. Principal White says he creates a welcoming and fun learning environment. He has also helped shape students' lives through his role as a coach. He is always supportive of colleagues and willing to work together to problem-solve.
And our final retiree tonight is Scott Wittenberg, an art teacher specializing in photography at the high school. Principal Theato says his program has opened students' eyes to new ways of seeing the world. His artistic vision, technical expertise, and encouragement of creative expression will leave a lasting impression on his students. And I'd like to say congratulations to all of our retirees. And now we'll take a short recess for a brief reception. But at first, I think I need a motion.
Motion.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani? Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Sodder?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. We will have a reception in the.
And we will have a reception in the.
All right, welcome back. We had a nice time honoring our retirees. We are going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I will need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2025 regular meeting and the April 15th, 2025 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Sauter?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani? Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
And then next we'll hear from Superintendent Hunt.
Oh, good evening. So, uh, I board certainly appreciate your kind words towards our retirees. You had 31 individuals that retired in the school district this year. Uh, as you know, some of that is due to some of the retirement changes, uh, the STRS level. Uh, but I, I can't, uh, I, I can't put into words uh, the impact of 31 educators who have given so many years to our school district. And you think about, uh, how many names and faces were impacted by them. So, uh, just once again, congratulations to our retirees and, uh, thank you for, thank them all for their, their service to the district. Uh, so tonight in the superintendent's report, we've got a few district highlights. Uh, do want to update you on facility master planning. Uh, a brief legislative update, uh, on the state budget bill, uh, and some policies, uh, as well. Uh, when we, when we think about our staff, uh, in, in, uh, across the board, uh, and, and the values of our organization, uh, too often we get caught up in the day to day and we forget to reflect and thank the people that, uh, are doing just great things for students every single day, whether it's in front of a classroom or driving a bus or, or greeting and helping parents enroll into our school district. And, and I know tonight, I think we've, you know, student voice is important and I would love to be able to give the, the staff appreciation speech that captures you, but I can't do it better than our students. So I'm just going to play this video to thank, uh, our entire staff for all that they do. So, uh, staff appreciation week was last week and we just want to thank our entire staff for all that they do on, on a daily basis for our students and moving our mission and vision and values, uh, forward, uh, on it every single day. Uh, also want to thank all of our support organizations. I think everybody in the district gained a few pounds last week with the, uh, wonderful meals and, uh, the celebrations that, uh, took place throughout the, the school district. Uh, so when we think about kind of where we're at in the school year, it's certainly a time for reflection and celebration. And I certainly have had the opportunity to attend a lot of different events uh, over the, uh, past week. Uh, we've accomplished a variety of accomplishments for our seniors. Uh, we had a senior honors assembly. Uh, we also recognize freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors for their service award. We think about that service component of, 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 uh, our values, uh, in our mission. Uh, we had 217 Upper Arlington High School students, uh, give back in a huge way. They logged more than 21,000 of hours of community service, uh, for over 110 organizations. So again, uh, when you think about that, that averages almost 28 hours per Upper Arlington High School student. So just an amazing, uh, recognition, uh, ceremony. And obviously we have a big celebration coming up here on Memorial Day as we recognize the 101st graduating class of Upper Arlington High School and, and certainly, uh, look forward to, to that great event as well. Uh, but there are so many showcases of, of the wonderful things going on from concerts to academic showcases. And it's just a great time of year to reflect on, um, all that has been accomplished. Uh, our last Rotary Student of the Month, uh, will be, uh, introduced this week. Uh, this is a program that we started, uh, to just, uh, highlight students that, uh, really have demonstrated the, the mission and vision of our organization. This month's, this month's Rotary student is Taylor M. Uh, she's a three-year member of Interact Club and also enjoys volunteering at Windermere at the library and working as a coding teacher, uh, for younger students. So certainly congratulations to, to Taylor and look forward to, um, that recognition. Uh, tonight on your agenda, we do have a recommendation and, and excited to recommend Michael Voss, uh, as the new, uh, chief technology officer for Upper Arlington School. Mike has spent the last 10 years in New Albany schools. Prior to that, he served as the CTO for Dublin City Schools and actually began his, uh, career as a science teacher. Uh, really look forward to all that he has to bring to our organization. He has an amazing balance of kind of the technical side of, of, of what we need to keep, do to keep things up and running, as well as that instructional side of, uh, where we're at and how we can leverage technology to better personalize education. So that recommendation will be on your agenda as well. I did want to highlight, uh, at your, uh, at our special board meeting on April 15th, the board did approve, uh, Jasa George is the, Jasa George is the next principal at Jones Middle School. Jasa is currently an assistant principal in Ottawa Hills in the Toledo area. Uh, she's an extensive experience in special education and she and her husband are very excited about relocating to Columbus and certainly, uh, joining, uh, as principal of, of Jones Middle School. So it's been a busy, uh, couple of days, uh, for facility master planning. So last night we, uh, held. So last night we, uh, held a, a community meeting where we shared out the most recent, uh, set of options based on the feedback that we received from the community. We had over two hundred individuals attend last night, uh, and we had a crowded house this morning over at Graff, uh, to review those options. Uh, I, I'm really happy with the level of engagement, uh, the, the, the level of feedback as we move, uh, move this process forward. Uh, at this point, I, I think we are in a position where, uh, we will take in feedback. Uh, we've pushed this attached survey or this survey out to our community, uh, and we will share the video of the presentation that was given, uh, last night as well. So we're just encouraging all of our community to please give additional feedback. Uh, we did, uh, modify and change options as you've seen, uh, the, those presentations provided to the board. Uh, we removed the, the Thompson Park, uh, Hastings Middle School relocation option. Uh, we moved towards a three-story building at, uh, on the Hastings site to really free up space on that site. And we're receiving a lot of positive feedback, uh, on the changes and really just encouraging as much engagement and involvement as we can. From a process standpoint, our goal at this point is to gather all of that feedback and bring it to you, uh, board in, at our June retreat. And we'll talk about next steps in process. One of the things I have, uh, said to the community originally when we set the timeline out, we anticipated a, a recommendation to you in September of next year. And I think with the, the complexity of what we're dealing with, with the costs that we're dealing with, uh, we're going to need more time to engage with our community on this. Uh, so I would anticipate that recommendation moving, uh, into the end of, the end of this year, maybe beginning of, of, of next year. Uh, again, all costs are, are kind of built off of a November twenty-six ballot issue, but obviously that all remains to be seen in terms of, uh, where we go as, as a board, uh, moving forward. So just appreciate that the level of engagement, uh, and the involvement. Uh, I know last month, uh, Mr. Geisfeld talked a little bit about state budget. Uh, we continue to be actively engaged with our legislature around the state budget. Uh, we also are, have an opportunity to go out and talk to our, uh, our, our various buildings and, and try to help our employees and staff understand the implications of what's go, currently going on. There's really two big issues here. One, there's a, there's a shift and a move away from the fair funding formula. If you've been around in Ohio for some time, you know that the, the funding formula has been ruled unconstitutional, uh, three or four different times. And part of that is that the formula was not based on what does it actually cost to educate a child. Uh, the fair funding formula was a move to that, in that direction, uh, to try to fund based on what it costs to educate a child. So moving away from that puts us back in a space, uh, where it's very difficult to, to predict what, what the funding model will be moving forward and what will be allocated to school district. Uh, the global we of education, I think that's problematic. The direct impact here is not as high on the fair funding side right now. Uh, obviously the cap issue is a much more significant issue. Uh, we have a communication ready to go out to our community by the end of this week, uh, encouraging them to talk to and reach out to legislators as well. Try to leverage our community. Um, we believe that, uh, this kind of overrides what's already been voted on as, as resources for the community, kind of taking away that local control piece, uh, that, that it's being kind of billed as tax relief and it will create this one-time, uh, relief that will then bounce back. And it likely will put districts like Upper Arlington back on the ballot more often. And, 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 uh, we, we really strongly believe that the decisions on how we operate financially should be made locally and by the local community. And that's what we'll continue to advocate for as we go forward. So we do have some policies that are on the agenda for approval tonight. So I've asked Dr. Sidens to provide the board an update, uh, on those policies and answer any questions that you might have on those before, uh, we get to that, uh, portion of the agenda.
Good evening. Um, so I'll talk a little bit about, uh, starting with our policies for first read tonight. You have, uh, five tobacco-related policies, um, and then one drug prevention policy. So I'm going to explain a little bit about those. So the Department of Health each year looks at districts', uh, tobacco policies and actually gives, uh, school districts a grade. Um, Upper Arlington actually gets an A on this grade, but we would like an A plus. And, and so we've, uh, sought out information from the Department of Health that, uh, helps us understand what about our policies need to be revised to make it an A plus. So, uh, the revisions that you see in your packet are what they recommended for districts to kind of be at that A-plus level. So the five tobacco policies are identical. They are just for different audiences. So just to give you some insight, there's a one-six, one-five for administrators. There's a three-two, one-five for certified staff, four-two, one-five for classified staff, five-five, one-two for students, and then seven-four, three-four for visitors and parents. So the policies look just exactly the same. They're just for different types of, or groups of folks who are in the district. And then the five-five-three-zero drug prevention policy is, um, a broader policy that doesn't just address tobacco, but also other types of, uh, drugs and controlled substances. So the policies themselves, the main changes are that we are adding language that clarified that, uh, tobacco use is prohibited for, um, on and off district premises except, um, for designated times. So this would be any school activities, even if it's off of our campus. And then it also requires that we provide training on the policy. So we added that language. And then the drug prevention policy itself, uh, has language about, um, not using drugs within one thousand feet of any facility uh, and that we would provide a student assistance program to provide prevention information to students. So those are the, uh, amendments that you see. We also have, uh, policy five-seven-eight-oh dot oh-one, which is the new policy Parents' Bill of Rights. So this is as a result of House Bill Eight, which requires districts to adopt a new policy by July one. And the statute requires, uh, um, specific components to that policy, including things like notifying parents of a substantial change in any student services. So that would be counseling, mental health services, physical health. Um, it would also require parent permission to, uh, include any healthcare service for their child. And then, um, there is a process for parental, parents expressing concerns with anything in the district, uh, related to services that are provided. And so it specifies what that parent, uh, process would be. And then it also prohibits, um, sexuality content from being used in instructional materials for K-three. So all of that is part of the statute. I also want to clarify because we've gotten some questions about, um, in the policy itself, you see strike-through language for two components. And that has to do with, um, parents' right to inspect instructional materials and right to inspect technology provider contract. Our board, you all, um, just in the winter approved a policy five-seven-eight-oh that includes that exact language. So we already have a policy that has that language and legal, our legal team advised us not to duplicate the language in two policies. So we have both five-seven-eight-oh and five-seven-eight-oh dot oh-one in this new policy. So just to clarify, uh, it is not being removed. It's just in a different policy. Um, another, uh, policy that's first read is, uh, eight-five-three-one, which is free and reduced price meals. And that policy was updated, uh, and recommended from our nutrition services, um, staff because to align with our current practice in notifying families about, uh, free and reduced lunch and that it's done through registration. So that amendment is a result of our current practice. I'm going to pause there for the first read policies before I talk about the second read. Any questions?
Well, I know the, uh, the policy was at five-eight, seven-zero.
Yes.
The one where we were dragged. A lot of parents saw that, got a little, um, worried that we were not giving them the right to do that. So I don't know if it's necessary to, but I'm glad that you brought it up so that the parents now know that this is, the right is still there, just we don't want to have a duplicate policy.
Thank you. Yes, that's correct.
Somebody posted it on social media today and so I'm glad we can clarify that.
Thank you.
Sophie, can you talk just for a second about, um, definition D that says, "Any request by a student to identify as a gender that does not align with the student's biological sex." Um, we don't ask for any kind of documentation of biological sex of students, I don't believe, in the registration process. And so I'm a little confused on how that's supposed to be enforced.
I do want to clarify, are you talking about the Parents' Bill of Rights policy right now, just to clarify?
Yeah.
But, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, and so, and sorry, your question is to...
No, just, I mean, so the policy says that, um, any request by a student to identify as a gender that does not align with the student's biological sex, um, is something that constitutes students' mental, emotional and physical health or well-being. Um, but we don't have documentation for all our students on what their biological sex is. So I'm, I'm confused on how this is supposed to be enforced because, I mean, is it just whatever gender the parents reported when they enrolled the child and were assuming is the biological sex? It's, it just feels a little, um, vague to me.
So I will clarify, uh, I will check the statute. It, I believe it is required in statute that we include that component in the policy, but I will double-check that. And, um, yes, it, some of the aspects that would be difficult to monitor, um, but it is required that we provide language to that effect in the policy.
I, I think this kind of gets to a little bit of maybe a broader question for me. Can you talk a little bit about what, if anything, would this force us to change from our current practices, right? Um, and so things in particular around healthcare consent with our mental health services. I know we have, I'm assuming tier-one services wouldn't be included because those I don't believe are defined as healthcare. Um, but what about the tier-two, tier-three services? What, are there particular impacts there? What, what does this impact for us?
So I think that quite a few of the components, um, so parent permission, uh, notifying parents, uh, also the parent concern or complaint process is actually already in our practice and policies. And so many of those things will not change. It's just that we need to make sure as a team, we're clarifying what we're looking for, what we're communicating. Um, so for example, we already have a practice of informing parents about, um, vision and, um, hearing screening. That would be a component that we would continue. Um, but what, part of what, it does not define in very specific detail, the statute, what health services mean. And so part of what we'll do is go through and just make sure we're thorough about what we're communicating about. Um, we also already request parent permission. And then we, uh, in our nine-one-three-zero public complaint policy, we have a complaint procedure. It just tweaks the, um, sort of order of events a little bit from that policy. So again, it's something that we have in place now. Um, so it won't change a lot of our practice. It's just that we'll make sure we're specific. Um, I don't, in terms of the tiering, I think that what, um, the law doesn't really get into detail about whether we would tier or clarify services by tier. Rather, we would more focus on what is inclusive of healthcare services. Um, the law does specify this does not include emergency services or if a child is getting health services because of an IEP or five-oh-four. Um, so that would not be part of the notification because we already handle that through the IP or five-oh-four process, for example. Um, but that is part of what we'll be looking at in detail. I don't expect to tier the health services, but to, but to specify what would be included.
Okay. Yeah, just, uh, the other thing, if you can talk to us a little bit, we have, we have and continue to have protections for parents to understand what is happening. Again, robust practices around notifications. We get lots of emails, um, and, and those sorts of things. We also have protections for staff and for students around academic freedom. Can you talk a little bit about how do we resolve scenarios when there's potential tension between the different audiences that we are trying to create space for to learn together?
Sure. Um, so I think, and I know you asked about like academic freedom, for example, and things like that. So, um, I know I, the law itself specifies that nothing in the act should be construed as prohibiting, uh, academic freedom. So it, it does call that out in the statute. I also, um, we have a number of policies in place to help protect, um, for example, we have controversial issues policy so that teachers have a process where if something may be deemed controversial, potentially there is a process where they can, um, use a rubric and look at the materials, look if it's developmentally appropriate, if it's aligned to standards, and then tell parents that this information would be shared. Uh, and then parents have a chance to inspect and then opt out. And so there are some of those procedures and policies in place to help address that specific concern. And so we would point to those that are already in place and being utilized.
Thank you.
I just, what, I'm sure there's already a plan in place, but as those practices may change, when there's specificity around like K through three, I'm assuming there will be some professional development. And I know there's already been communication throughout this process as we've had those changes coming with our staff and teachers to make sure that they understand what any new guidelines are and to make sure they feel confident and comfortable in their classrooms.
Yes, and thank you. Part of House Bill Eight required that by April ninth, um, we are clear that we're prohibiting, um, sexuality content being used for K-three. So we did share, uh, information with our teachers and principals, uh, who teach K-three about how, um, what the law contains and how to approach that. And so we will continue to support teachers through the process. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then we have, uh, for second read tonight, which is on your voting agenda, a few policies. So I'll just highlight some of those. We have two-four-six-oh, special education. So this is a policy we've had on and off, and then on again. Um, Neola and, uh, recommended that we pull the policy because the Department of Education workforce had some incorrect references to about four different policies. So they have been corrected now at the April fifteenth work session. You all, um, that was our first read for the policy. And now, um, we're putting it on the voting agenda for approval, which essentially says that we will follow the Department of Education workforce model policies and procedures. And, um, we, our legal team confirmed all the corrections have been made. Um, also on your voting agenda is five-two-two-three, the release time for religious instruction. And so I know we've been talking about that for several months. I do want to point out that in this version, um, our legal team did advise us, based on Attorney General Yost's letter that was sent to board members, that a slight tweak be made in the section on, uh, trinkets and materials. And the slight tweak is that, uh, we essentially clarified that in the policy that children, um, if they are provided with any materials, that they just need to keep them in their backpacks and not distribute them to other children and that they are securely packed away and that any failure to adhere to this prohibition may result in rescission. Before it said shall result in rescission. So that adjustment was made at the recommendation of our legal counsel for your consideration. Another policy that's before you, student voice and engagement, which we've talked about for a few months. Uh, and then another, two policies that will, um, that you tabled last month and that we have for you to untable and then consider on, for the approval. Five-three-three-zero is use of medication. So we'd last month talked about, or we were asked about the, uh, application of sunscreen and getting, uh, written parent permission. I did consult with our school nurses and they do recommend that you remove the language requiring written permission, uh, for use of, for self-application of sunscreen. So we've made that adjustment. It will be more in line with practice and what is desired, uh, both for nurses and parents to make it as easy as possible to protect our children from the sun rays. And then five-six-one-zero, removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusion is a policy, uh, that allows the superintendent to expel a child up to a hundred and eighty days for, uh, behavior that causes, uh, imminent and severe endangerment to the health and safety of other students. There were no changes made to the policy, but the questions were around reporting and when we report to the Office of Civil Rights at the federal level and then at the state level. And so we clarified that, uh, we report to the Office of Civil Rights every two years. And so our next reporting schedule is for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that reporting timeframe would be, uh, December of twenty-six through March of twenty-seven. And then the other piece we clarified is that we are, um, continuously reporting on this data to the state. And so that happens throughout the year. And so that happens throughout the year. So we did clarify those for you. I think that is all that is on your voting agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions about those. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, we have now reached the public participation portion of the meeting. The board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing the school community to express themselves on school matters of community interest. I'd like to thank those of you who have signed up for participation today and ask that you start by first stating your name. You can feel free to share any other information you believe would be relevant, such as group affiliation or whether or not you have children in the district. We want to hear from as many people as possible, so please keep in mind that you will have up to three minutes to address the board. Please direct your comments to the board as a whole. If you have questions, please know that this is not the time to question individual board members or district employees, but we will make sure to follow up with you. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student. And so you cannot discuss individual students during the public participation.
Laura, do we have any public participants?
We have two individuals. The first one is Ivana L.
Okay, hi guys, I'm back. Thank you for letting me practice my public speaking skills here with you all again. First, I do want to, I do want to talk to, speak to Mr. Sauter as far as his comment about the post. That was my Facebook post. I was then educated by one of my kind neighbors and I did edit that to let everyone know that I was not in fact correct, that it was a replacement. Because the last thing I want to do truly is spread any kind of misinformation. It's not what I want to do. Now, why am I here? I, we all know why I'm here. I'm here because of the curriculum changes at the progressive programs at Wickliffe and Barrington. Many people I spoke with, why are you going? It's done, doesn't really matter. One thing I'm trying to teach my children is that if it matters to you, it matters. And if it matters to you, speak. And so I'm here to speak. And I guess what I would ask would be for consideration, possibly the purchase of a secondary curriculum just for the progressive programs that would fit, that would align with those programs more. I wouldn't expect a change. I know the curriculum chosen is a good curriculum for general ed. Completely fine with that. And if my child was at Tremont or one of the other elementary schools, I wouldn't be standing here. So that is my ask in regards to the curriculum. I also would like to thank everyone who came to the roundtable at Wickliffe. As fun as it was sparring a bit with Mr. Palmeroy there, in the end, it really was, you know, this was the decision that was made. We should have done better with communication, which is all true. But I mean, in the end, it kind of left us with, this is, it is what it is, right? Which is unfortunate. One minute left, I will say. I've spoken previously about the playground at Wickliffe, the incompleteness of the playground at Wickliffe. And I recently had a meeting with the committee and some school administration and we spoke about the playground and getting another large climbing piece, climbing structure. And we thought about, oh, well, let's put out a survey, see what specifically, you know, people would be, kids would be interested in. And there was a comment, why would we get a survey of the students now when it'll be at least five or six years before we can put it in the ground? So it, we will not get the children of Wickliffe Progressive a completed playground for the kids that are there now. So once again, I ask you with the next budget for the middle schools and the preschool to consider adding funds to get one more large climbing structure at Wickliffe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next individual is Suzie M.
Hi, everyone. My name is Suzie and I am here to support Ivana's request of a multi-age classroom at Wickliffe. All three of my kids went to Wickliffe and their multi-age experience was wonderful. So in my opinion, multi-age classrooms are a benefit to the students because they blend older and younger children for most of the day. Multi-age classes are more than just teaching strategy. They're a philosophy rooted in the belief that every child learns differently and deserves a space to grow at their own pace. In these classrooms, education becomes personal. Students aren't rushed to keep up or held back to wait. They move forward when they're ready. This individualized learning fosters confidence, resilience, and a lifelong love of learning. Older students in multi-age settings often take on mentorship roles, helping younger peers with reading, math, or even just navigating the day. In doing so, they reinforce their own knowledge and develop leadership skills. Younger students in turn benefit from peer modeling and gain confidence by seeing what lies ahead. This dynamic creates a culture of empathy, patience, and mutual respect. Socially, these classrooms are vibrant communities. Children learn to communicate across age groups, resolve conflicts with maturity, and celebrate each other's successes. They're not just classmates, they're collaborators. Because the curriculum is flexible, teachers can tailor lessons to the interests and needs of the group, making learning more engaging and meaningful. My three kids, Natalia, Andrew, and Elena, experienced this learning style at Wickliffe. They grew up in multi-age classrooms and have become adults who are adaptable, emotionally intelligent, and self-directed. Andrew, for example, from my young age, always was tinkering, taking toys apart, building things with his Legos, figuring out the longest hot wheels track throughout our house without flipping his cars and asking what if. His multi-age classroom didn't just tolerate his curiosity, it encouraged it. With the freedom to explore and the encouragement of the older peers and teachers, Andrew built on his curiosity by converting an old bicycle into a working moped. Today, Andrew is chasing his dream of becoming a mechanical engineer, driven by the same love of learning that was nurtured in that inclusive, flexible environment. Natalia was always quiet and observer, more of a participant. In a traditional classroom, she may have been overlooked. But in her multi-age classroom, she was given the time and space to grow her confidence. Surrounded by supportive peers and mentors, she found her voice. Today, she leads the Young Life team at Grandview, excels in the classroom, and is preparing to start her nursing career at Children's Hospital. She discovered her passion for caring for others, working, work that demands empathy, communication, and emotional intelligence, all skills she began developing in that inclusive, nurturing classroom. Finally, running out of time, Elena, a rising junior whose time at Wickliffe has been marked by joy, kindness, and deep love of learning. Her smile is infectious and she welcomes everyone with warmth and grace. Elena sees good in people and carries herself with a quiet strength. She always striving to better herself, exploring what's next with curiosity and courage. Her journey is a testament to how multi-age classrooms nurture not just intellect, but character.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Well, the last thing is we create better people with multi-age classrooms.
Thank you so much. Up next, we have our discussion of the 25-26 Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding Membership and the Possible Action. So this is in regards to our membership in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit that we are currently a part of. It, we agreed at the end of, or almost a year ago now, to sign up for one year. And so we must renew every year if that's what we want to do. So that is the portion we are at right now. And I will start by making a motion that the Upper Arlington Board of Education would authorize and direct the school district joiner of the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding for the 25-26 school year at $2 per district pupil on our most recent report card and would direct the treasurer to pay the coalition that amount.
Second.
And then we can open it up for discussion if there is discussion to be had.
I would like to have some information about the evidence of the money that we paid last year and how it's being spent, not only for our district, but lots of discussions happened early on and we were somewhat led to believe that this would be a lawsuit that would be handled and taken care of rather swiftly. That clearly is not the case. And so I have some real concerns about paying more money on behalf of this organization when I don't know how the money thus far has been spent.
So I think that I would have to find the information. I mean, I would say most of, I'm, I'm sit on the steering committee. And so I want to say on, I'm trying to pull it up when it was. There was a hearing. I want to make sure I say the right date. There was a hearing on summary judgment. And so it has, they have not given a timeframe at that summary judgment as to when the next dates are. So, or when it will... So it says, "No hint of a timeframe of trial dates." There's 10 lawyers on the defense side, four with bogs and veners, four with state private counsel, and two with the Catholic families. And the judge had nothing to say about future proceedings. It's, would seem that the intensity of arguments from both sides would necessitate a trial. So that's that's the information I have regarding the hearing.
I guess my question, I appreciate that, but my question is more, how much money has been collected? What are we doing with that money? Is it just to fund lawyers? Are we making any progress? Because I've been on the website and I'm not seeing any reporting back to the folks that are a part of this consortium. So that's my concern.
In a meeting with them last year, this money primarily goes towards legal fees. And this lawsuit has been going on for years. Prior to the change, the recent changes in the school voucher program. And so there is no timeline for this to end. It's, because I asked that question, how long has this been lawsuit been going on since members of the people that were with us had been involved with the lawsuit for, I believe it was five to seven years?
So Bob, is there any information we can request?
Yeah, to answer your question specifically about our local contribution, was a little over $12,800 last year. It'd be a little over $13,000 this coming year. We do get, and I guess I assume the board received these as well. We do get updates from the Vouchers Hurt Ohio. And I don't know if that's me just being, you know, signed on to that newsletter or if those come to you. So I can certainly make sure the board gets those. So they do provide kind of, you know, updates on what's going on. Specifically, I think Jenny's captured kind of where it stands. And I think Lou is accurate in terms of, you know, costs are used to defer or expend on legal fees to continue to pursue this.
And I guess I want to be clear, this is not about whether, to me anyway, whether you support public schools or not. This is the appropriate use of money and time and resources to chase something that may never end up coming to fruition. So that's my frustration. So we're going to come back next year and it's going to be another 12, 15, however many thousand. And how long does this go on? So that's, that's my issue.
Heard, I think there is, Laura, to your point, there's, there's a projection of this, right? Legal cases do take a long time to grind through the courts. That is the function of the process. Offsetting the almost billion dollars a year we see going into the current voucher program across the state of Ohio, 12 to $13,000 annually feels like a reasonable investment to try to protect taxpayer money. Get it. Is that going to wind its way through? Is there a guaranteed outcome? None of those things are true, but that's, that's part of the prioritization and decision that we have to make as a part of this.
I get, my feelings of why we joined last year and why we would join again this year really haven't changed. The numbers haven't changed. There is no cap. There is no salary that somebody can make. It seems to be a subsidy for kids who are already in private schools. And I think that that is a great choice for some families. That was the choice that my own family made. I went to Catholic schools. I don't think that the state and the way that our state constitution is written is intended for our state dollars to go to private schools. And I think when we look at the move away from the fair funding formula, that that's a direct, there's a direct correlation between the vouchers and the state dollars. And ultimately, if we lose state dollars, then it falls on property taxes and it falls on our community to subsidize the money that we're not getting from the state, which is essentially us subsidizing other kids to go to private schools. So for me, I, nothing has changed. I also understand that level of frustration that I don't know how long this will take, but I do think it's something that's worth fighting for, not only for our kids, but for the people who pay taxes in our community.
Well, I, I think it's great that everybody feels that way. We are, we should not be using our constituents' tax dollars to fund the legal fees for a school voucher program that has been set up and legal by the Ohio representatives in the state of Ohio. If you're all free to go donate your own money to this program, I'm sure you have, you're so passionate about it. But I don't think we should be using our taxpayers' tax dollars to fund this lawsuit that has been going on for years and will go on for years simply to pay the high-priced legal fees of attorneys to deprive children their right to attend the school of their choice. Now, I know in Upper Arlington, a lot of us, we have this, we do have a wonderful school. I'm proud of it and my kids all went through it. But there are children throughout the state that are in really poor situations. And this voucher program also provides them with the opportunity to go to a safe school that they otherwise would not be able to go to. I work right by South High School and you're free to come down there at, when they ring the bell at the end of the school day and watch the 17 cruisers that park outside of South High School every day as they let out, not because there's a problem there, but to detour a problem that would be there if they weren't parked outside of there. So there are kids in the state of Ohio who have serious problems where they are and this program provides them with the opportunity. This lawsuit, this lawsuit was in place while this voucher program was in place for them only and not for kids in Upper Arlington. So they started this lawsuit prior to them opening up the voucher program to everybody.
The things you're saying, Lou, are, that's your opinion.
That they started the lawsuit?
No, that the voucher program is providing those opportunities. That is an opinion. I understand that it is a perspective, but the other perspective would be if you funded our schools fairly, which has already been said, that our schools are not funded according to our constitution, that if you fully funded them, that would also help kids who are in failing districts. So it is a different perspective.
Again, feel free to donate. We are getting, we are getting an increase in funding and
And the reality-
Our district, which the people that live here, our district, is getting more money from the state of Ohio than they did before. So we are getting, we are not impacted as, and again, feel free to double your- and again, feel free to double your donation personally to this lawsuit. I encourage you. But using, uh, I do not, look, we're not going to agree. I believe using our tax dollars to do that is, is a waste of money. I'm sure that uh, you know, you will all increase your personal donations to this lawsuit that will never end. And I'm sure the legal, the attorneys in, involved are very happy that we're sending our tax dollars to them.
I, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One, just because the state house passage passes legislation, legislation does not necessarily mean that it adheres to the state constitution and that is in fact what our court system is there to adjudicate, right? So there are lots of very impressive legal minds who have a different perspective than what, what Lou you've indicated about the state of the voucher or the voucher program. Second, um, the voucher program doesn't necessarily offer kids a better opportunity. The vast majority of data that is based off the program, even just for the last decade, indicates that voucher students perform at best the same, if not worst, over time in public school or than their counterparts in public schools. So they're not necessarily getting a better opportunity. And furthermore, it is not the student's choice. All of those private schools do not have to adhere to non-discrimination rules. They don't have to necessarily serve special ed kids. Um, and, and uh, so it becomes the school's choice, not the student's choice as to whether or not they can be accepted into that private school. Not even considering all of the other hurdles around additional tuition and the associated costs that come with attending a private school. So I, I hear your perspective. I understand it. But the landscape, I think as Jenny has said, has not changed in the last year. I, again, all of the reasons that uh pushed me to vote to join the lawsuit, I think still stand and there hasn't been any developments or changes in the program to provide better accountability, better consistency and access. Um, and, and now frankly, in our own district, we're seeing thousands of dollars go to tax dollars, go to private school students that were already attending private school. And I think we're accountable to, to be fiduciarily responsible for our taxpayers' money. And this is one lever that we have to do that.
Those people live here and they, they, their property taxes to our school, they, they fund our, our public school. And that's a decision made by the, anyway, again, I encourage you all to double and triple your personal donation to this lawsuit, which I do not believe
Okay. Should be- We're like covering the same point.
I just want to make sure that there is what, um, one, I don't want us to be spreading any misinformation. So I, I appreciate that we have reflected, I think, all the different opinions that are out there. And so I'm, I'm grateful for that comprehensive conversation. Um, one thing that I just want to make sure is the state budget as it is proposed for this year gives us more in one line and takes away significantly more with the cap. So it is not an accurate statement to say that the state budget is going to give us more money. That's, I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that.
We receive more money from the state of Ohio this year than we did last year. And we are not going to be impacted by this voucher program. There is no data that says that is, that is true. And there is no data that says we will be impacted by it.
Any more comments?
Yep.
Want to call the roll?
Yeah. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Santiani?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Nay.
Mrs. Trent?
Nay.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Next up, we have our fiscal update.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to go ahead and start with where we're at currently for um, last month's financials. So April, we're almost to the end of our fiscal year, which ends June 30th. So these numbers are based on our proposed May 2025 forecast changes. So if you um, look at the numbers, we are favorable, which is great. And this is, if we continue where we're at, we think we'll be a little over $200,000 um, positive from where we forecasted in November. So still very, very small amounts. We're very close to where we initially predicted we would be. Um, on the revenue side, again, these are all things that I think we've gone over, over the last couple months. Um, our taxes have ended up being very close. We had talked earlier about some variances just with timing of taxes. Um, we have put those into the forecast. So we're, we're pretty right on our state revenue. Again, is pretty close within about $34,000. And then our all other revenue is um, up. And again, that's us trying to trend out some um, interest rates, which have been way better than expected. So we did increase those. Um, and you'll see that in a few minutes when we go over the forecast. But overall, an increase of $117,000 is very, very close um, in the big picture of things. And we're still within less than 1% of a variance. So I feel pretty good about that. And I think Andy does as well. On the expenditure side, we're still very close. Um, overall, we're actually a little bit higher in salary and benefits than we anticipated. Um, but in purchase services, we're under. A lot of that has to do with sub-costs and some of our special ed costs. Um, I don't think that'll change very much, but we have seen a slight um, tick recently and some of these may come to you next month and some special ed placements. Um, but they're very, very minor. So I don't foresee that number changing. And then all other expenditures were, were right on. So in total, again, we're within $100,000 of where we thought we would be. So very, very minor on a percentage, big picture wise. So the five-year forecast, um, so we are required to do this by law. And if you remember, every November we present it to you and then again, it comes back every May. So we do it on three years of actual past data and then five years of projection. So we're just updating this and then we'll submit it to ODE. Um, Andy likes to remind everybody, this is a living, breathing document and it is constantly changing. So we will submit it um, to OD before the end of this month, but the biennial budget won't come out until June sometime. Probably not till closer to the end of June. So it, we can virtually submit it and within a month, it could look different and we will be tweaking it um, throughout the summer and then re-presenting it to you guys in the fall. Once we know what that actually looks like. I mentioned a few things. Um, but this does not include any of the revisions that they're talking about as we don't know what those will look like. They are about um, week two out of recess. And again, I know that I heard new changes possibly yesterday. I was on a call today at one o'clock about some other possible changes. So we don't have any of that forecasted in. So that's just a big reminder. So this is a great look on kind of where our prior forecast was is the dotted line. And I know it's very, very hard to see. And the current forecast is the solid black line. So even when you're looking five years out into 2029, you're talking about a 1% difference from where we originally were. So very, very minor differences. Um, and again, it's actually slightly better than it was. That has a lot to do with our interest revenue being higher and us projecting that out all five years as continuing to be higher than we initially anticipated. This kind of gives you big picture of the changes um, from the November to the May. Again, at the bottom, we did go ahead and add the percentage. So you can tell we're talking about less than a half of percent change for 2025. Again, those are just little tweaks. Once we had more months of current data than um, we did in November when we were only a few months into the fiscal year. And we've had our first half tax collections as well. So we were able to update those with actual numbers. And then going outward, it builds up a little bit, but we're still within 1.2% even at five years out. So we feel really good about that. Um, and that, that's a very minor, minor tweak, big picture wise. Um, one of the biggest changes is real estate taxes. Um, so we've talked about this a little bit before, but the collection timing is different than it's been in the past. So it used to be um, closer to 55% that we were getting the first half in that January, February timing. And then we'd get the remaining percentage in um, August. It seems like we've had a shift in this district. Um, not exactly sure why, but there's been a shift. So we've accounted for that in this five-year forecast. So in 2025, we are shifting it down um, to 53.11%. And then going out in fiscal years, we're assuming that that shift is going to continue because that is the trend we've seen. So we'll see less of a collection in the front half. We'll still get the collection in the back half that we expect, but it's just, it's just a timing shift. Unfortunately, it crosses over fiscal years. So we have to account for that a little differently. Um, the other big difference, and I say big and it's less than a tenth of a percentage point, but it does make a difference is the collection rate. Um, we've seen a trend where it's gone slightly down over the last couple of years. So we are accounting for that. So instead of a 99.5% collection rate, we are forecasting out in um, future years, 99.4%. So again, very small, but it does make a little difference. The last point to kind of make, and you'll see this in a timing difference, which is why it's not carried forward in all five years, is um, it's the TIF at the old Lazarus area where the um, new center is. We expected that TIF to start collections this year and we have been told it'll start next year. It is common to be two years or three years into a TIF before it starts. But that first year, then you're reclassing the first three years of TIFs um, instead of just two that we are projecting. So you see a decrease in 2025 and then a little bit in 2026 just because of timing. And then you see much less of that as the TIF kind of goes into just one year at a time, instead of collecting for previous years as well as the current year. Our public um, utility taxes, I know Andy's talked a little bit about as well. So we did have um, some variations and we had some evaluations that were done. We feel pretty good about those and where they stand. So there is a change for 2025 to bring it up to current because of some evaluations um, that were questioned. That is um, not going to be seen going forward. We expect 100% of a taxing or a collection rate. Um, and so we're not going to carry that forward to future years. So that's why you see that dip in 2026. Um, and then it goes back up and is flat. Once those evaluations and um, any reevaluations are completed, then it should flatten itself back out in future years. So for all other revenue, um, this is where I kind of mentioned an increase in investment income. So we have seen a large increase um, over what was expected, which is, is really great for us. And I think a lot of people personally, other districts, it's always great when you can get more on your investments. So we did account for that. And then in future years, we did account for it because we have some securities that have already been purchased by the district that are locked into certain um, interest rates. And so we did adjust and account for that going out all five years. On the expenditure side, we have even less of a variance, which is um, very good. And we hope to be able to keep that. So we're going to talk here in a minute about some STRS changes and um, ask or explain a transfer into our um, severance fund. But that's really the only change you're seeing in purchase services. Everything else, salary and benefits, we feel good about where we were projected originally. So there is no change there. So we'll have the one-time change in the purchase services. And then um, that's just for this year. And then we'll have the all other expenditures will be pretty flat with some changes we made. So utilities this year have come in less, which is one of the reasons it's better. Outside contracts have come in less. And again, those are mostly related to student services. Um, and we do not expect that trend to continue just because it's been pretty steady this year. We see it as an anomaly if it happens going forward. And again, is less than maybe in November we'll make the change, but right now we think it's kind of a one-off and an anomaly. So that'll kind of flatten back out. So the big change here, oops, I skipped a page. The big change here is going to be in that 2025 year. So it, we are going to ask that you transfer a million dollars into our retirement or severance fund. We had more um, retirees this year than expected and that was due to a change that STRS made in reducing the number of years down to 32 years of service in order to retire. And because of that increase, we would like to move money now to make sure we can account for it and account for any future changes that that may have a trickle-down effect for. The reason it's not a full million dollars in 2025 is, I don't know if you remember, we got a rebate from our um, county taxes. And so any of the fees that they assessed that they didn't spend, they gave it back. That's not something that we can guarantee. But that did help offset the million dollars that we're moving. So that's why it's only a little over 800,000 in that first year. And then it um, kind of levels off. The other major issue or major um, expense is why you'll still see something in the out years is textbooks and resources materials have gone up exponentially. And due to those costs, we need to um, budget closer to a million dollars instead of $500,000. So year after year, we do have to increase that amount. And that's why you see those um, four to 500,000 dollars because we expect those causes, those costs to continue to increase and not decrease anytime soon. Oops, is there a blank one? We stuck calling? Oh, so if I click again? Oh, here we go. So this is the um, other item and that's just transferring the a million dollars for the STRS to our benefit fund, which is that severance fund. So overall, we have very small changes. They are a positive outlook um, to the five years, but they are very minor as far as percentage and, and big picture. Do you have any questions? That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Or I think the only other thing I would add uh, tonight is that we continue to mon- monitor the state budget in the, in the, in the cap implications of the cap. Uh, so Andy and I sat down with Greg, look at our capital plan, long, long range as well. Uh, there may be additional transfer that we make recommendations in June uh, based on, on, on the status of that. So we'll see where it comes out of the Senate and we'll, we'll certainly have those conversations and, and continue to update you.
Next, I'll need a motion um, to approve the consent agenda items eight A through 12 G.
Uh, G was removed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Really knocking that one out of the park. What comes before GF? Um, eight A through 12 F. Sorry, guys. So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. Next, um, we will need a motion to approve the transportation office renovation resolution.
So moved.
Do I? Do I, I'm sorry. Do I want to do those all? Well, we'll just do them separately.
You can-
You can do-
A and B.
Yeah.
A and B. So I had a, construction items A and B. One is the transportation office renovation resolution. And the other is the Barrington Elementary School fence repair and replacement project.
So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. And then next, I will need a motion to approve the attached retire, rehire notice for Catherine Shapiro, which will authorize the treasurer to issue this notice on or before May 14th, following sunshine laws.
So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder? Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. And then next, we are on the continued policies discussion from the April 25th board meeting of the second read. This is the use of medication and the removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusions. And I think we need a motion to take those policies off the table for continued discussion on the second read. Is that correct?
Yes.
So moved.
And is there any further discussion on those two policies? And is there any further discussion on those two policies?
I just wanted to say I'm grateful for that time to make a thoughtful change to that policy. Because the sense, we want to make sure that we have policies that are enforceable and that we are actually living day to day. So just wanted to express some gratitude for disabling last month and for you guys spending the energy to find out that we really don't need to get permission for something. So, thank you.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. And then next, I'll need a motion to approve the attached policies of twenty-four sixty, which is the special education, fifty-two twenty-three, which is RTRI, and the stu- and then the student voice and engagement. And for some reason, that policy number is not on here.
So moved.
My second.
Mrs. Stump?
Oh, is there any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
So I had two questions. Are we just doing those three? Because there's a second packet, a secondary policies.
I think the administrative file attachment was just the list of policies for the last couple of sections. Is that what you're looking at, Nidhi?
Well, no, there's the three, and then there's the five thirteen, twenty-five, secondary policies, I think they're separate.
That's actually, that document is just the list of policies itself, the summary? I believe.
No, that was the other, that document, previously. Anyways, okay. So I just had one kind of, I guess, more general concern that comes up. What came up with the voucher lawsuit, but then it also comes up here with the RTRI program. I would love for us as a board to consider exploring what true consensus looks like at our retreat next month. I feel like we often kind of operate more like rule of majority and kind of leave out the minority opinions and don't necessarily find ways to honor and bring that into the conversation. So just kind of a general thing that kind of comes up with two different votes that we've taken today about what consensus looks like to our board. Because I know with the RTI, RI program, it was very much a, we have three people and let's move on. So just a general thing I would love for us to explore either at the retreat or in another session.
I'm just happy that we finally are able to get these policies in place and the current model works well with the students that are currently and taking advantage of this program, and it doesn't impact them whatsoever.
Yeah, thank you to the staff on working through a lot of the details on this. I know we had a lot of rounds of feedback and discussion, and, and I think we have landed in a good spot that gets us as close as we can at this particular moment. So appreciate it.
So sorry, we're making sure everything is in the right order. Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. And then that other attachment is just the list.
Right, and it includes two policies that were not in the last motion, so fifty-three thirty and fifty-six ten.
Correct.
Okay.
So I think we'll have to have a second motion.
Yes, so then we'll need a motion to approve policies fifty-three, sorry, they're not listed.
Fifty-
Oh, fifty-three thirty and fifty-six ten. I'm sorry, we already voted on those. That was the, or that we voted to keep them off the table. Sorry, I thought that was so now we need a motion to approve those. Those are the two policies that we need to vote on.
I make a motion to approve fifty-three thirty and fifty-six ten.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder? Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. Next, we will need to approve the attached memorandum of agreement with UAEA. Do I need to leave any more detail on that? It's a Whitcliff School Counselor Job Share, Reduced Service Years Requirement of STRS and Retirement Incentive MOA and the Preschool MOA.
So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. Next, I will need a motion to approve athletic items seventeen A and seventeen B.
So moved.
One second.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Dan.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye. And then we have our future agenda items.
Yeah, so there'll continue to be a variety of personnel issues as we look towards staffing for next school year. So I'd anticipate continued staffing recommendations. We will also, last year, we started the process of bringing the board a resource list to approve annually. So we will provide an updated list from a curriculum perspective next meeting as well. And then, as, as was mentioned, we do have the board retreat on June twenty-sixth scheduled. And we'll have a variety of topics for that as well, and I'll share those at the meeting.
Okay, and then I need a motion to go into executive session. No, just one reason. Motion to go into executive session in accordance with ORC one-two-one-point-two-two-G-three.
So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Aye.
Mr. Soder?
Aye.
Dr. Santiani?
Aye.
Mrs. Trent?